Please silence your cell phones so you won't interrupt the meeting. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Commissioner Redd votes and our pledge by Commissioner Booth. Please stand.
Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight to do the work of the people of Beaufort County, let us remember that on All Saints' Day, all of those that have passed before us and all the work that they have done to promote your word in this world. We ask tonight that we act with kindness and fairness and support those people of Beaufort County. We ask all this in your son's name, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Place the flag. The flag will be lifted in the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. At this time, are there any conflicts of interest? Any commissioner having any type of conflict? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. We have a motion. Is there a second? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you. Six. I'm sorry. Bad math. Public comments. Our first person is Len Wood. I cannot make out your last name. Price, okay. Please identify yourself and you have three minutes. Come to the podium, please.
Probably some with Blackwater Forest Street Incorporated in Daniel, North Carolina. We recently been on a snag and drag operation in this county. And we were low bidders and did not receive the job. We have been in business, I've been what forty-five years doing this type work. I mean, we've been doing this snag and drag probably fifteen years, you know. You cut a tree, cut it in pieces, throw it to the side of the bank, or you wrench it to the side of the bank. You know, we're very capable. We work for Whitehouse and we do three thousand acres a year of pruning with Whitehouse. And we was picked out of five companies to do the work. We do it for ten, we've been doing it for ten years. The first year, they had never had three thousand acres done in a year. We did three thousand acres. First year, we did it. Numerous jobs that work for NRCS, doing string restoration. We do build ponds, dig ditches, work all over Beaufort County, Martin County, Hyde County. I mean, to be told that we're not qualified sort of is a slap in the face to me, you know. I'd rather just someone say, well, we pick somebody else, you know. And I don't, we didn't give all our resources that we have. We give the ones most recent with snag and drag, which I didn't think, you know, snag and drag, you know. I didn't think you had to give everything, all the companies you had worked for before to get a simple little job, you know. And I can say this is a small job, you know, and it's, we got men willing to work. All you got to do is not be scared of snakes, water, and be willing to work. And you know, I don't, you know, you bid on something, it's gonna how bad you want it. Whether you take it a low bid or a higher bid, you know. And I know we can do the job. We'll do the job, done bunches of them. And every reference that we gave told us they gave us a good reference. So I don't see why we won't pick. And I could go on for a long time. I could tell you jobs we done, this, that, done, we've been doing good. But bottom line, we should have been picked. That's twenty-two thousand dollars that your county's gonna lose. Give it to someone you don't think is competent. And if it was my money, whoever did that would not be working for me long, you know. That's, that's a lot of money. That's a lot. To me, it is. I don't know about you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Ray Larry. Good evening, everyone. Ray Larry from South Carolina. And I ran across this item here a few weeks ago. It's from the Johnston County, North Carolina Board of Commissioners meeting of June twenty-one during a budget concession. And there was an exchange between one of the commissioners, Mr. Fred Smith, and the chairman. And the chairman asked why full funding for Johnston County public schools cannot be approved at this meeting. And he answered succinctly. I am committed to helping to educate our children. I am not committed to having our children indoctrinated. Critical race theory indoctrinate schoolchildren with some of the most toxic and anti-American theories ever considered. It pushes the vision of America. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about this great country. It pushes the vision of America to cast our history, our culture, our traditions, and our founding documents in the most negative possible light. And if that's not bad enough from teaching that history is evil, they have now moved to telling white students that they are evil. Instead of helping young people discover that America is the greatest, most tolerant, most generous nation in history, it teaches that America is systematically evil and that our hearts of our people are full with hatred and malice. And it is so far from the great Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., who said that our children should be not ju- should not be judged by their skin, but be judged by the content of their character. Indoctrination of generations of children with these extreme ideas is not just immoral, it is a program for national suicide. We cannot have that doctrine that attacks our country and attacks our people taught in our public schools. The only power or authority that we have as county commissioners is our funding power. Thank you. Another thing, if you want to read this, it's not in there minutes. It's on the video and I transcribed.
Dawn Slan? Did I say that correctly? Slan. Okay. It's L. I didn't know whether it was a lock of teeth.
Should be a doctor. Hello, my name is Dawn Brinson Slan. I'm a resident of Beaufort County, a small business owner and a taxpayer. I have worked in the pharmaceutical industry for almost thirty-seven years. My roles have been in quality and regulatory compliance and work of increasing responsibility up to and including Vice President of Quality. Thirty-one of those years with GlaxoSmithKline, a global company that also manufactured vaccines. I have the background and I know the specifics. I have participated in many FDA inspections of facilities for new products, product changes, regular inspections, and for cause. I'm asking that everyone here make themselves aware of the real information and the data that is available for the COVID-19 vaccine. Until you can get your computers and do some research, let me provide a few facts for you. First, there is no approved vaccine available on the U.S. market. It is plainly stated in the labeling for the Pfizer Beyond Tech vaccine that Pfizer has no plans at this time to provide the ComorNadi vaccine to the U.S. market. All vaccines are still being provided under an emergency use authorization. While this used to be a great way to provide lifesaving medications to people in life-threatening situations, when no other drug is available, it is no longer safe. In changes made to the regulations for EUA in December of 2020 by President Obama, there were many loopholes for those in charge to circumvent the system. Changes like no requirement for manufacturing the drug under EUA according to good manufacturing practices. These were foundational regulations put into place and enforced by FDA to protect the American people. This is just one of the several changes to that regulation that does not have the help of the American people in mind. Second, there was no recommendations by FDA to allow for boosters or mixing vaccines. The CDC overrode the FDA's vote sixteen to three against allowing the booster and sent out the call for everyone to get the booster. FDA did say that there may be benefit to those who compromised immune systems over sixty-five. In addition, there was significant data from children that had been vaccinated as part of the study, along with the adverse event data from adults, to show that there was minimal benefit to get children getting the vaccine. And yet, once again, the CDC has recommended the vaccine for children ages five to eleven. Why would you subject a child to so many unknown factors when there's no data to show they are significantly impacted from the virus? And why would you do it based on six months of data from a study that does not end until 2023? All the vaccines were either developed and/or tested with scientific technology that utilizes abortion-derived fetal cells. This information is on the NC Department of Health and Human Services website. In addition, whistleblowers from Pfizer have provided emails and validation of this information and the attempt of senior scientists at Pfizer to hide the information. These emails came out in the last couple of weeks. This goes against my religious beliefs and probably many others if they knew it. The data on the CDC website for North Carolina has not been updated since July of 2021. The last time I checked, the data showed that we were at fifty-two percent of expected deaths for all causes, and the only deaths being reported were COVID deaths. How in the world can a local health department provide data supposedly from the state without completing data accurately on federal websites? And finally, the first study with results for unvaccinated compared to vaccinated show that the vaccinated are most likely to have more severe sickness when they get COVID because the vaccine has proven it does not prevent you from getting COVID and that they are more likely than unvaccinated to have more detrimental outcomes. If we're going to push an unapproved product, can we at least get some face time for the rest of the story? I'll be happy to provide any of the information I've mentioned to those that would like to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our legislative update, and we do not have any of our state elected officials here. So we will move forward with our items for consent.
Mr. Chairman. I pull item number two, Sheriff's Office.
Okay. What's your? That's with the pulling of item number two. Is there a second? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Pose. Five one. We'll send your item to, let's see. Let's put it under K. It'll be item number three. Let's move to our item for discussion and decision. Here from our health director, Jay Mattson.
So let's see, day five eighty-seven since COVID started in Beaufort County. And by the way, that's the gestational period for an infant, so it's just to go to show how long a period of time that is for that. I just want to start out with showing the North Carolina numbers and that the North Carolina numbers are starting to go down in the right direction. They have been, I, you know, that last meeting I was showing that they started going down. And so they continue to go down in the right way, right direction. And then we're seeing the same thing in Beaufort County. At the peak, the second peak here, the one that we just recently went through, we were at sixty per day. We are right now at nine per day. And when I say nine per day, that's the seven-day average I'm talking about. So we have had seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one cases that have been reported to the health department. And right now, I'm estimating about a hundred and twenty-seven active cases that we have. We have one person in the hospital and we have one person on ventilator. This is just showing you the, how we compare it to the counties around us. So we're still up a little bit higher than some of the counties, two are less. But we'll be down into that same quartile, I guess, pretty soon, probably. As of October twenty-six, I compiled all this data. We had, and this was in part in response to a question that was asked at the last meeting about the impact of the vaccine and what it's having on cases. So on that day, we had about fifty percent of our population had been fully vaccinated. And then between June first and October twenty-six, we had fourteen percent or three hundred and sixty-two of the vaccinated people that were identified as a case and two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine that were unvaccinated. And so I said during that meeting that I thought the vaccine was working because I would expect ten percent, about fifty percent of the cases to be vaccinated if it didn't work. So I wanted to bring in a little bit of scientific data to show you calculations. So with chi square, what we call two-by-two table, what you do is you compare the observed numbers with the expected numbers. Since half the people in Beaufort County are vaccinated, I would expect fifty percent of the cases to be vaccinated as well. So then using the calculation, which is that formula you see at the bottom there, I'm able to determine how significant those differences are. And I just say they're different, but to tell you, to show you the numbers. So in this, here, I did the test, and in the big circle down there, you can see what I put in. Fifty percent of expected vaccinated, like in row one, and fifty percent expected unvaccinated in row one. And then I use the calculations, and then in the small circle, you can see a number point zero 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 one. The lower that number, the more different they are, more significantly different they are. So what this has said in this test of the lower two thousand Beaufort County residents since June first is that the vaccine did have a significant impact on the spread of, or the cases that we had during that time period. So just looking at testing numbers. Last week, we had five hundred and ninety-five that we tested. And that's down from eight hundred and thirty-three from the week before. So the demand for testing has gone down drastically with the numbers of COVID cases going on as well. And then you can see that positivity rate of those that we tested out of those five hundred and ninety-five, five point nine percent of them were positive. And this makes the third week in a row now that we've been down below ten percent. Again, that's a number we want to stay below for the positivity rate. So both are good signs, numbers being down as well as positivity rate being down. So the test sites that we still maintain in the county from a health department's perspective is that we have testing at the health department from seven-thirty in the morning to eleven o'clock every day, Monday through Friday, days that were, you know, open. And then we have a second site that is at Hackney Avenue, at the Temple of Jesus Christ, their life center, which is across the street from the church itself. They are actually open from eight to five to make it a little bit easier for people to get access to get tested. As I mentioned before, I just want everybody to remember that you can call Bass and get a free delivery there if you have transportation issues to get tested. So look at our vaccination demand. You can see that the last week it was down. We had one hundred people that started the vaccine the week of, or last week, ending twenty-fifth of October. So we're still seeing about that hundred per week number of people that are starting the vaccine. This has nothing to do with the booster, second shot, or any of that kind of stuff. So where we sit right now is fifty percent of our total population has completed the vaccination. Eighty-nine percent of the vulnerable population, the elderly population, have completed the vaccines. Fifty percent of those that are eighteen and older, and a quarter of the children that between the ages of twelve and seventeen have completed the vaccine. The vaccine information that's coming out right now is that we're expecting the final approval from the ACIP for the five to eleven-year-olds tomorrow. And then we would expect the state standing orders to come down to us by the end of next, or end of this week. And then we'll be able to start offering the vaccine to the five and eleven-year-olds at that point.
The state of North Carolina has no position on five to eleven-year-olds getting vaccinated?
The state, yeah, they have a.
What's their position?
Positive.
Positive, something needs to be done. Is there gonna be a mandate from the governor on children being vaccinated?
I don't know. I haven't heard anything about that. So I can't really say. I can't speak for the governor on that.
I'd like to remind the public that the governor has no statutory authority to mandate that children, or any of us, get vaccinated.
Yeah, I think the Public Health Commission would probably make that mandate if there was one.
Yeah, to take the General Assembly to do it.
Well, just to clarify, I think the General Assembly gave the Public Health Commission the authority to do that.
They think about.
Okay. Again, I'm not worried about it. I was just trying to clarify the way I understood it. So we do offer the first doses of Moderna, Pfizer, and Johnson &amp; Johnson on Mondays at the health department from twelve-thirty to four. And the second doses are given on the second, on Tuesday. The second dose is on Tuesdays. And they were just, I threw this in there because the flu shots are now being done through that drive-through on Wednesdays. So what we have done is we moved all those, to those dates, so that we can focus in on the boosters, which has just come out for us to do the Pfizer, Moderna, and then Johnson &amp; Johnson. All right. So the booster recommendations are for sixty-five and older, eighteen and older, if you're a high risk, like if you work in a high-risk area or you are a high risk for your health conditions. And then we're also, pretty much, if somebody is at, if they say they're, they're high risk, we pretty much will give them the shot. We're not really vetting it too much. We are doing the mass vaccinations out at the community college. Appointments are already available online, and we're trying to do about six hundred per day is our, kind of our target. I know we have five days in November that were scheduled, and then some days in December. But after about two weeks, we're gonna look to see how many people go on through. And if the numbers are not that large, then we're gonna move it back to the health department. But it'll be an assessment done in about a couple of weeks. We just want to make sure that everybody knows it's available for them to go online at the health department and sign up for a, an appointment. We're gonna do it, drive through, as long as the weather's nice. This is a layout of the driving pad out at the community college, so you can see when you turn left at the second entrance into the community college. As you get to the driving pad, they'll go in there, they'll check in. And what we're basically doing is making sure that you're eligible because you have, you know, it has to be at least six months since you got your last one. And then we'll give you paperwork when you drive around and then go through the, the new building out there where they do the EMS training and stuff like that. And that's where we'll have nurses that are providing the vaccine at that time. Right. A lot of the time, a lot of the questions that you asked last time was about immunity. So I said, okay, let me throw up some immunity stuff and try to present that to you so that it might be easier for, when I explain something about the antibodies and stuff like that. So it's take your immune system. There's different parts of the immune system. One is the mechanical and basically barriers of defense. And that involves your, your skin and chemicals, mechanical stuff like sneezing and coughing. And then you have some cellular activity that occurs up in the nasal area, which fights off bacteria and viruses and those kind of things. And then you have antibody development, which is basically seroconversion. So you're gonna hear that term seroconversion a lot. So there's five types of antibodies. IgM and IgG are the most common ones that you'll see in somebody's blood. IgM is a little bit short-term. IgG is long-term. So if I draw your, your blood and I see a lot of IgM, it means that you had a recent infection or could still be, have an infection going right now. If I see a lot of IgG, it means you probably were exposed to it a while back. If you see a high combination of both, you're probably in between there, some stage. IgA is more common in the respiratory system. So that's gonna be up, a lot of times you're not gonna see that at all in blood. So you've heard about antibody test in the nose, that's usually what they're going for there. You hear antibody test in blood. Let's use the IgM and IgG that you're talking about. So IgG is the important one when it comes to what we call lasting immunity. So I was trying to explain last time that some people have positive tests, but they don't have the COVID disease. This is what I was referring to, is that the COVID could be up in your nose, and you can have that mechanical defense going on, but you don't seroconvert because it's just growing in your nose. It's not heavy. You might have some of the IgA in there, but you're not actually seroconverting IgM. And then you have those that seroconvert, which means that now they have the IgM and IgG in their blood. And that's about sixty-three percent in one study of people that hospitalized converted. So it also means like four out of ten didn't convert. What does show is that the amount of viral load or how sick you are has a lot to do with whether you seroconvert or not. So here's one study where it was showing, each, each of these columns represents a different level of seriousness in their illness. The far, it's gonna be on your far left, non-hospitalized. Then it goes to hospitalized, intubated, which is more serious, deceased. And then, of course, they, they showed also immunocompromised people as well. So like I said, the higher IgG, the better protected you are against COVID, or what we all call natural immunity. So if you look at this, I put stars by the ones that have the IgGs on there. So you can see that each of those columns, how much of people develop IgG. So on the non-hospitalized above, you can see about fifty percent of people converted, and they weren't hospitalized. If they were hospitalized, about seventy-five percent of them converted. If they were intubated, about ninety-five percent of them converted to IgG. And then if they deceased, their blood had a ninety-nine percent protection against COVID. Of course, that's a different circumstance. And then with immunocompromised, only ten percent of people converted. So again, seriousness of your disease comes in. So this plays into some of those questions that was asked last time about why we don't count people that have had it because they may be the forty percent in the non-hospitalized, and I don't know that. So I'm recognizing that it happens. I just can't tell y'all the percentage of people that fall into any of these categories. That makes sense. Here's just another one showing total antibody level. And the green one is showing people that have been infected are sick with COVID. If they had a mild case, you see the bar's lower. If they were seriously ill, at a much higher bar. And then the blue compares somebody that's never had the infection but got the vaccine after the second dose. So it's comparable, and I'll point out, it's not even as high as the natural one. But you can see that by not having had it, you have a good number, a good level. The red one shows people that had vaccination and had the infection. So again, the vaccine helps keep them up.
If you've been vaccinated and say you get COVID again, are all the symptoms the same for everyone or is there a different variety? An alternate variety of symptoms for different kinds of people?
Well, the stuff that I've seen is that reactions much classic if you've been vaccinated.
You don't always lose your sense of smell or taste? Okay.
You may. You can have any, you can have any variety of level of, of illness, even if you've been vaccinated. It's just the amount or the probability of it is lower. And because a lot of it has to do with viral load, and then you may have something else going on at times attacking your immune system so you're not able to fight it off as well. There's a lot of certain, it's very complex. And that's why sometimes when I'm trying to explain it, I wonder if I stumble over my own words to get there. But the answer is that he can have a variety of symptoms, whether you've been vaccinated or unvaccinated. uh, the answer is that he can have a variety of symptoms, whether you've been vaccinated or unvaccinated. But vaccinated typically protect, protects people as a population.
I, I, I mentioned this because in early September, I got sick of something. I thought it was cold, and it seemed to be a little more than that. But it wasn't too terribly bad, got into chest. But nobody around me got sick. And I was around a lot of folks, they'd all been vaccinated. And, and then generally when somebody gets a cold, somebody else gets one too.
Right.
You know what I mean? I was uh, so I, I was just wondering, I, I did get the tiredness. It went on for about a month or a month and a half. That's the one symptom I did get.
Oh, tell you about, I have to believe it's fifty-five years from now.
Well, that's okay. Well, this is for the moment.
I don't know.
I'm just giving context to this whole discussion.
So I just wanted to show how the booster shots work with bringing that immunity up. You eat your first shot, you have a response, but when it starts to go down, then they time your second shot, and that really shoots you up. And that has a little longer lasting effect. Um, now the booster shots and how often booster shots go, I've said from the very beginning, I don't know what they're gonna schedule for it. It turned out in this case here, it was six days, or six months for this booster shot. And I don't know if it's gonna be another year for another booster, or if it's gonna be five years for another booster, or ten years. I wish I could tell you all that. But I'm not even reading that on the news. I know I hear some people say it's gonna be a yearly shot like the blue. And other people say, well, it should last for a lot longer, so I, I just try to tell you all what I know, and I try to speculate on anything like that. Well, that's, that's the how boosters do, keep your immune system up. So, this is the uh, this is the um, coronavirus. Y'all seen that um, model before? And I put a little star by two things there. The blue star is by what we call spike protein. Most everybody's probably heard of the spike protein at this point. And then the red star is by the nucleocapsid protein, which is uh, more on the surface and inside the cell wall itself. So it's right there on the, the cell wall. And so this is important for a couple of reasons, because when you do, when you create antibodies, antibodies all try to attack some part of that cell, this virus. The, the vaccines that we have all attack the spike proteins. Your natural immune system may fight against the spike proteins. Uh, and more commonly though, it also fights against that uh, the nucleocapsid protein as well. But our, the vaccines don't attack that. So that's important to know, because if you do an antibody test and you get the um, the nucleocapsids only, or if you have those, that means you have an infection at some time. If you have the spike protein antibodies, then it could mean you either have neutral or a natural in- uh, infection, or you could've gotten the vaccine. Right? So that's why I'm trying to say how complex antibodies are when you say shouldn't we get an antibody test? Currently, there are eighty-nine antibody tests for COVID on the market. All of them are EUA right now. So none of them are FDA-approved except for one, which recently was about two weeks ago. So that's why you probably have a lot of unknowns coming about when it comes to recommendations about antibodies, and what it means, and the interpretations of antibodies. Certainly something that little health director from Boford County is not gonna be tied into as much as somebody that works in a lab, virology lab, or something like that. Uh, but I do know this, uh, they look like a Y is a, the shape that we talk about for an antibody. And the only part that's important is the very top of that, that blue part up there, which is what binds to either that nucleocapsid protein that I said, or to that um, spike protein. And there's other parts of the thing that could bind to. That's what kills the, the virus. So uh, um, I don't know. I just wanna make sure that y'all understand that there's different antibody tests, there's eighty-nine of them out there. So we don't, we don't do any testing at the Health Department, uh, because if you came up with the results, we wouldn't really be qualified to talk to you about whether it means you got long-lasting antibody or immunity, or short-term immunity. And so the CDC does have a guideline for antibody testing. There are three points that I wanna make sure that y'all understood from this. Is that the CDC right now does not recommend antibody testing in the case, in, to replace the virology test. So to tell if you have the COVID or not, they're not recommending the antibody test. Antibody tests can vary in their individual performances and characteristics. This is a, this is a reference to the fact there's eighty-nine tests out there, and we're not sure what level means you have immunity. Yet. There's a lot of studies that are going out, so the FDA has to approve those before we can get to a point where we tell the public this means this. And then antibody testing is not currently recommended to assist, or to assess somebody for their immunity level. So we're not supposed to use it to assess need for vaccination in an unvaccinated person, or to quarantine somebody or any of that. So right now, the CDC is saying, I can't use any antibody testing for, well, I would use antibody testing for our health director. But that doesn't mean that you can't have a test and talk to your doctor about it. That's where, that's where I'm going with this. If you want antibody testing, you should talk to your doctor about it. And then in a way, it leads up to this particular slide to show you that the state has been doing some uh, sero prevalence. That means they're going out randomly taking people and drawing bloods and seeing what their um, their um, antibodies levels were. And in North Carolina, uh, out of one thou- uh, one, yeah, one thousand three hundred and two people in, looking in the circle, they were looking at the nucleocapsid. So that means they're only looking at people that had been infected with the COVID. Has nothing to do with whether they got the vaccine or not. So these are people that got infected. It looks like about twenty-six perc- uh, twenty-two point six percent of North Carolinians were. So if I look at Boford County, that means that we probably had about ten thousand six hundred and twenty-two cases of COVID. Um, you know, infection in Boford County. Not the seven thousand three hundred that I found, you know, during my reports to the Health Department. Uh, my biggest problem now, knowing that number, is that I cannot tell you how many of them actually got vaccinated, so that'd be nice if I could just add that number to the numbers vaccinated, but I can't, because I don't know which of these people would've gotten vaccinated without it. A big study. Any questions? I'll go to the next.
Yes.
Part. Okay. So communicable diseases, um, I don't know, uh, most people here may not know this, but I do a presentation to the commissioners, and I give them how many numbers we do each year. And we do about three hundred and fifty to four hundred case investigations in Boford County with our communicable disease nurse, and anybody that can help her do these. This is all before COVID, prior to COVID, so a lot of the, a lot of times, they're not really too serious, you know, that what I worry about. And other times, it might be tuberculosis, uh, porcias, an outbreak at the daycare center, uh, long-term care facility, they have something going on. Um, and then, you know, we have an occasional foodborne outbreak or something like that. But anyway, it's, it can be intense at times for the communicable disease nurse. So North Carolina has recognized this as a big problem for a while. Because in two thousand and nineteen, they actually put into the budget communicable disease money to go to the health departments, but if y'all remember, the two thousand and nineteen budget was not passed. So it wasn't included there. Um, uh, but for this year, uh, House Bill sixty-one came out, and in it is recognizing again the need for local health departments for expansion to local uh, infrastructure activities associated with communicable diseases, specifically surveillance, detection, control, and prevention. And so um, the, the bill is in there, it got passed, it's now been passed by the House and Senate, and is in the current bill that is being negotiated, I guess, with the governor at this point. So we're waiting for it to come back as positive. In that bill, it talks about recurring funding to two local health departments. Uh, eighteen million is gonna be divided equally among each health department, and eighteen million is gonna be divided based off of population. Uh, so that means a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Boford County as part of the uh, the hundred, the cut of a hundred of eighteen million. And then uh, with our one point seven one six is what it turns out to be per resident, comes up to another seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars that we'll be getting when the bill's passed, uh, a total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred estimates, just an estimate, because I don't know if they're gonna use the census data from before this, but they shouldn't be too much different from this. So what, uh, and I was telling, this is uh, of what, you know, we talked about this uh, almost two years ago, when I first started uh, seeing this money was gonna come down. But again, it didn't pass, and I was still waiting for it to be passed. But I do have a couple of stages in this that I'd like to move forward with, and that's why I'm here today to talk to you about this. Is I have right now one communicable disease nurse. She's been getting a lot of help from everybody for this, for the last couple of years. But right now, that's all I have is one. So what I wanted to do is take my public health nurse, two is my immunization nurse. So she goes out and does all the immunization. She's been in charge of the COVID vaccine immunization, so she's been doing a lot of work right now on COVID. And I wanna make her a three. Then I wanna train her to be a communicable disease nurse, so she's gonna help. So I'll have two people trained, have the Health Department now to be a communicable disease nurse. That step one is only gonna uh, be an increase of three thousand five hundred dollars for her. But COVID funding will take care of it, because we have a couple of years of still COVID money that we can put into that. So we'll be in county dollars there. Uh, then step two is based off of the, the approval of the state budget. So when it comes, I would activate stage two and hire a nurse and LPN, which will run me about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then uh, I'm gonna take one person that has two really hard jobs and separate them out. And then, then you hire, we'll take half the job, the other one will take the other half of the job, and then train them also in communicable disease with the funding that we're getting. Uh, I'm also gonna use about fifteen hundred dollars of operational cost. And what that will do is out of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, I'll be able to reduce the county dollars that is going towards the one nurse already that I had on first. And then also she'll be able to return about ten thousand dollars of clinical operations with that funding. So again, I'm going from the current picture, which is one communicable disease nurse, to four nurses that I'll be training in communicable disease. My uh, my uh, revenue would increase from the state, two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars. But I'll be able to decrease the county budget portion of my budget by ninety-two thousand dollars. So see, I think I wanted to say one more thing with that, was that um, oh, as far as that second stage goes, I'll have to come to y'all for a further minute anyway. So y'all get final say on those numbers. I'm just showing you what the numbers will probably be, and I'm really asking for us to approve the step one part, so I can go ahead and move forward with that one.
Questions from any commissioners? I have a comment. All I'm doing is uh, uh, provided that those jobs exist only as long as the state pays for them.
It, it, it's specifically in recurrent dollars. Um, so I think it's gonna be there for a while. I'm pretty sure that the impact of COVID is gonna stay in the mind of people for a long time. And they recognize in that bill how the state has not done its part in funding the local communicable disease efforts. I think it's gonna be there for a long time. I appreciate what you're saying. I agree with that.
Is there a motion? You have a motion? Is there a second? What is the motion? What are we voting on? First thing, okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I can't move forward with the second thing until then, but I just want you to know that it is a two-faced thing.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cooperative extension, Rod Grigas.
My clothes, it's just a second. I don't wanna do something wrong. I'm not a good P- I'm a PC person. I'm a PC person, not a Mac person. As my technician comes up to get my, my uh, video straight, I would like to say, thank you all again for being willing to let us come and occasionally do a little update on cooperative extension this, I appreciate it. The um, a few months ago, I was in to make a few comments. My intention was to talk about agriculture that day, and then come back in periodically with updates on our Family and Consumer Science program, as well as our 4H program. But agriculture is a thing of the day right now. Harvest season is underway. I wanna show a video. And um, hopefully, I don't know if the uh, if it's gonna be too loud, I'm trying to cut it down. My apologies to Commissioner Walker, this is not as good as the video that we have produced before, but I'm pretty proud of it. It's a video that we um, put together to inform and educate the public about, and I was gonna show it on, man. This is not what we wanted to educate the people, I'll say that. This is shit, man. Yeah, yeah. And this is something we wanted to put together to educate the public about uh, the importance of agriculture to the county. And we put some tidbits in here, as you can see as it plays, talking mainly about corn and soybean production. Harvest season is currently underway. In fact, I probably should say it's almost over with. We have been blessed this year with an unbelievable, unbelievably good harvest season. I mean, this crop has flown out of the field, and uh, and it's been good. Not only has the crop come out of the field really quickly, but it has, uh, the yields have been really, really good. With the exception of our tobacco crop. Now tobacco got, was negatively impacted by some wet weather, and that, that really seemed to, to put a damp on, on those guys and their, their yields. But outside of that crop, uh, corn, soybeans, our wheat crop that was harvested in June, and our um, cotton crop that's come in now is really, really good. Um, not only though are yields good this year, with the exception of a few dry spots on the south side of the county, we've also had a rare year, and there's a farmer in the room that, if I mention this, you can probably pick him out, because he's gonna be smiling about it, because all farmers do. When you get good yields and good prices, that's a rare occasion. And this year, we've actually had that. It's been a phenomenal year. Uh, if you see a farmer smiling right now, it's because of what I just mentioned. But he'll quickly turn to a frown on his face, because he starts to think, my next year. And next year, the issue is gonna be high input prices. They are skyrocketing, fertilizer, pesticides, everything is shooting up sky-high. The uh, amount of money that these guys are gonna have to put in. I cannot do two things at one time. I actually didn't surprise myself I did that. Uh, the, the, the amount of money they're gonna have to put in per acre to produce a crop next year is gonna be um, increased by a tremendous amount of money. So, so keep that in mind, but we're definitely gonna see positive impacts, I think, as far as this crop coming in and the money that it's gonna put back into our local economy. So be sure and thank a farmer. Also be aware, as I stated on that video, that uh, harvest season is still underway, and we're trying to encourage people to be careful as they're moving around. This equipment is on the road. This equipment is huge. If a farmer can't see you in the rearview mirrors on these machines, um, he doesn't know you're there, and accidents do happen. So we want to en- encourage people to be patient as these guys are moving their equipment around. A few things just to finish up though, uh, talking about the things that we'll be doing in the upcoming years, or upcoming months. Uh, and that's gonna be an educational output, outreach that we do. We'll be working with growers, educating them. A lot of education this year is gonna be on being more efficient. As I mentioned, input prices are skyrocketing. They're looking for ways to be more efficient with less, and so we're gonna definitely have some educational opportunities for those topics. Pesticide uh, recertification is always an issue. We'll be trying to keep them current on, on their um, pesticide license. Uh, we're also gonna work with the tax assessor, Lloyd Salter this year, to uh, do a little education on, on property taxes and some of the things that he is part of that he's gonna have to do moving forward and educating growers to kind of bring them along. So we find that we get a lot of opportunity when we have meetings and bring farmers in. For those meetings, there's a lot of opportunity to bring other things to the table. And so we'll be doing that. One thing I did want to mention though, and um, Mr. Madison's um, presentation reminded me of this, and I should've come probably uh, to the county manager to tell him, we were recently told, like so many other universities, that uh, we're now gonna be subject to the um, uh, vaccine mandate because of the federal dollars that are, and, and, and a lot of universities have federal dollars. NC State University has a lot of federal dollars because of the extension component that I represent. There's a lot of federal money involved. And so we're trying to untangle that in the next few months, as far as, or next few days. And so we're trying to untangle that in the next few months, as far as, or next few days and weeks, as far as how that's going to impact us, um, either locally or certainly as an institution. And that, that's going to cause some gray hairs. But anyway, those are some things that the extension is going to do. Next time I come in, we'll talk about 4H and Family Consumer Sciences. Any questions I can ask for you guys? Be happy to do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Made in Beaufort presentation, Jenny Bowen.
Let's see if I can find my presentation. Okay, I want to listen to the whole system.
Saw it earlier. Heard you were giving away your money.
Hey, Mar- Marshall, where'd you land this one?
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Um, my name's Jenny Bowen. I'm with the, uh, NIS Commission, and I'm the Workforce Development Director for the River East Workforce Development Board. Um, a couple of the commissioners actually saw this presentation last week, I believe, with the, um, Economic Development Advisory Group. So, but I wanted to come bring this to you so that you could, uh, see what we've done with Made in Beaufort County. So this initiative is actually, um, was originally funded by the Department of Commerce, the Maxx Carolina Grant. We have five local employers who contributed to building this. Um, and then Beaufort County Schools actually pitched in with some additional funds to create an additional video. Uh, we've had a lot of partners working on this, as you will see in the next slide. Um, so it's been a combination of Beaufort County Schools, Beaufort County Community College, uh, the Workforce Board, NC Works, and we've also brought in ECU. So that, as well as these employers, um, and Martin was a key part in getting all the employers on board as well as developing this, uh, framework. So what we're trying to do is promote advanced manufacturing to the students in schools. Not only is it promoting it to the students, but we also realized that in order to get the students interested in the jobs that are in their backyard, we need to influence the parents and the teachers because they're the influencers over those kids making those decisions. So this actually helps lay out the courses that they could take. Uh, any of these own or off ramps, whether it be Beaufort County Schools, the Community College, ECU, or if they just bridge straight from school or as an adult, right through NC Works into any of these. Uh, we were able to take all of our industries and actually break them down into four key categories. Uh, so you'll see the, the, um, names of all the different businesses. And the ones that have logos beside them here were the five participating that actually put funds in as we started this project. Uh, so you'll see IDX under woodworking, Iconic under boat building, PAS under plastics, and under welding, we had Canfield and Flanders. Um, but most of the industry is, is listed here. Um, so this is a new initiative called Made in Beaufort County. Um, again, we're starting out with this based on advanced manufacturing and the products that are made, as well as the jobs that go with that. So this is one of the other things that we've developed. So we've taken each of those four areas and really tried to pull out, say, the top 10 to 12 jobs that actually go with those areas. And so you notice we're not all talking about, um, just like if you look at the one for boat building, we're not talking, we're talking about upholstery, assemblers and fabricators, but fireglass leonators, but we're also talking about the carpenters and the office workers. We've got the, um, logistics and shipping and material handling and those type things included as well. The engineers, everybody who makes it work in manufacturing. And that's such a key part of our economy here. Um, we also have developed these. So there's one roadmap that has all four of those on it with the top jobs. Um, when we advertise those top jobs, we're not only looking at the number of openings that will be available in the area. We're showing them what the wages might be. And if you notice, when if you can see these a little bigger, um, some of them actually have little stars beside them, which indicate they'll need to do the community college or an apprenticeship program or ECU or somewhere else to get additional training in order to get these jobs. Um, in addition to that, we've actually also created these banners that we can use as we go to events. Martin can take them to trade shows. Um, I'm sure that he can tell you that one of the key things that an employer asks when they're looking at this area is what's your workforce look like? Initiatives like this make us much more attractive to an industry because they see that we have, that we're working on grassroots type of effort, um, to not only look at the existing workforce, but that pipeline that we're developing through the school systems. I don't know if this will play. This was actually a video, um, from Pete Caldwell with Caldwell Marine Designs. Um, and we actually have five or six of these videos up on the site that will be videos that were shot here in local manufacturing, um, so that they actually can have a few minutes to listen to somebody who actually worked in that field to talk about those jobs, what those careers look like. We've also developed a, um, website, which will house all the materials as well as all the videos. Um, you see the, the beginnings of that here. We also have a social media presence that will represent Made in Beaufort County. Um, in addition, so all of these were paid for by that Max Carolina Grant. We were able to use this and Made in Beaufort County specifically as an example, um, as one of the Golden Leaf grants that we've recently received. Um, and part of that is not only to build Made in Beaufort County out in five other surrounding counties to duplicate this effort, um, but also to build a River East Academy. I think Trey Goodson with NC East Alliance has spoken to you about this before. Um, this is a big part of the funding that we received from Golden Leaf. And again, we're looking at informing teachers and parents as well as students about career options for businesses and jobs that are right here in their backyard. Our Golden Leaf grant is a three-year grant. We've partnered with Beaufort, RT, Hurtford, Hyde, Martin, and Pitt. So those are our six key counties. Um, it'll be working with all the high schools and all four of the community colleges. Um, our plan is by the end of that three-year cycle, to train about 200 teachers. Uh, there'll be about 10 teachers per year, per county, um, that will be involved. So there'll be a total of about 30 teachers, um, 30 to 60 teachers that will go from each county that will be go through this training. It'll be training from community college faculty, industry experts. We'll also have, um, student ambassadors. So we realized that again, some of the other things is that kids don't want to hear from us, right? They want to hear from people their age, people who have just been there, done that. Um, so we're also going to have some student ambassador positions that will also go through this to help us from the community college perspective, go into the school system and promote those careers. Um, we'll also be developing a marketing toolkit for teachers as well as our student ambassadors to use when they talk to students. Um, and then we're partnering again with the community colleges, ECU's REDE program, the College of Engineering and Technology, My Future NC, um, the Society of Manufacturers, SME, and their Tooling U program, as well as Skills USA. So there's a lot going on around this effort. This is just, um, the tip. And again, Made in Beaufort County is our first in the six counties, so we're excited about that. And we also want to invite you to a ribbon cutting we'll be doing to launch Made in Beaufort County with all the materials, videos. Um, that'll be next week on Tuesday at 1:00 downtown at the Chamber.
I really didn't have a lot, but I'd just like to, uh, thank Jenny and River East from really, um, filling out an idea we had about Made in Beaufort County that a lot of people did not know what was made here, what the jobs were, and what was the pay. So as you see, this has been an incredible effort on the part of River East and brought a lot of knowledge and technology such as websites to this effort. I was just going to hand out a copy of some of the manufacturers that are in Beaufort County.
And when you look, and there's an extensive list, you'll see a few manufacturers we were not able to include in kind of our overall grouping. And I'll give you an example. Nutrien is not really, doesn't really fit into any of those four categories, even though they're our largest, one of our largest employers. However, they fit into so many of those categories when you actually look at the jobs. Um, so that's how we'll continue to promote them, even if they're not specifically listed. Any questions?
Questions from any commissioners? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. And with me tonight is the district's chairman, Mr. James Allen, and the district's, uh, resource conservation specialist. Give them a word if you have any questions afterwards. The Soul and Water District has two agenda items before you tonight. The first is a budget amendment. On November the 19th and 20th, the Beaufort Soul and Water District is assisting Southside High School with the 2021 FFA land judging competition. Expense items that the district will be responsible for will be paid through the district's 2022 operating budget. Beaufort County will be reimbursed for all payments made through monetary contributions from the North Carolina Association of Soul and Water Conservation Districts, Beaufort County Farm Bureau, and the Soul Science Society of North Carolina. The district's board of supervisors recommends the approval of the budget amendment to manage funds associated with the land judging competition.
You have a motion? Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion.
I have a question. Did I understand that we're going to get refunded this money?
Yes, sir. 100%.
No, if we're going to be refunded, the money has. Any, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Oppose? Get out of here.
Thank you. The second item is a purchase order for an expenditure above $30,000. Phase two of the district's stream debris removal project through the 2020 watershed restoration project is ready for startup. Through the formal bid process, five bids were received to complete the work. The three lowest bids, along with other information, were reviewed and discussed during a meeting of the district's board of supervisors on September the 27th. J&amp;J Environmental was approved by the district's board to complete the phase two work. This project is 100% funded through a state grant with no match required from Beaufort County. The Beaufort Soul and Water Conservation District's board of supervisors recommend the approval of the purchase order that you have in front of you tonight to complete work under phase two of their stream debris removal project.
I have some questions.
Commissioner Redd, question?
Well, you know, I'm looking at the tabulation here, and it says that J&amp;J Environmental is not the low bidder.
That's correct.
But I'm also looking at the tabulation, and I see that everybody is rated, who bid is rated at the same. There is no fly spec on the, the company that got, that put in the low bid price. So why are we bidding things if we're not going to bid to the lowest qualified bidder?
Are you referring to the Xs in those columns?
Yeah.
That just means that those items were submitted in the bid.
All right. Why did you not award this to the lowest qualified bidder, to the lowest bidder?
Would you like to say?
Um, as far as the references went, uh...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Is this, is this the winner of the bid?
No, no.
Oh, okay. He handled the bidding.
He handled the bidding process.
He's your employee.
Right.
Okay.
And he contacted all the references. And it wasn't that... And Ms. Price did not receive a bad reference per se. He, I was assured that he would get the job done. It was when I contacted J&amp;J's references, every single one of them, he's the best, absolute best. Can't wait to work with him again. It wasn't where there was a bad reference. It was just the quality of J&amp;J's references were much higher.
Well, but that doesn't quite seem to fit with me on awarding bids. Uh, you, he had good, everybody had good references. So what you're saying is that we can award bids based on the quality of the reference that we get?
I'm not close enough to say that.
Well then, why did you award this to somebody other than the lowest bidder?
The board did. I didn't award it to anybody. I'm disappointed.
I have a serious problem when I see that everybody's rated that close to the same. I've done, I've taken care of, I've done a few bids myself, and I've bid on a few things myself.
Yes, sir.
So what you're giving for an excuse is not a good excuse.
I have a good excuse.
Ever, ever, yes, you did. What did you do? What are you doing here?
I took the references and came up with one. They looked at it, and they reviewed them, and they chose the...
Didn't you say, didn't you say that the references for, uh, the low bidder were not as good as the references for the person that they all cited?
But they weren't.
Well, wait a minute. You have to take a position on this. Either the references were acceptable or they weren't.
I just said they weren't as good.
No, that, I, I have a serious problem based on what you're telling me with awarding this to anybody but the low bidder because you haven't told me he has bad references. You haven't told me he failed to perform on a contract.
Commissioner Redd, I think, hold on, hold on, hold on, sir. Hold on. I, I think you're putting him in a, in a bad spot. He, he, he is not in the decision-making process. He just, he just hands on the information. So you, I, I think your question should be directed to those who are in charge.
Well, the chairman of the board should step up and answer why. What's the difference in the references?
We were more satisfied with J&amp;J's references than we were the low bidder. And we had a unanimous decision to choose J&amp;J.
Well, what was the difference in the references that one was better than the other?
Our references stated that the low bidder had to be watched closely.
But the, his references said that about him?
Said that about him. He said he would get the job done, but he need, would have to be watched closely. That was the references that he got.
In other words, he would require exceptional supervision.
Right. And we don't have the labor to do it.
Okay, fine. That's the reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Redd votes.
You were here during the public comment period, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you respond to Blackwater?
Just as I just stated, that, uh, the low bidder would require more supervision than we had labor to provide. And where J&amp;J's references were excellent, these, the people we interviewed or contacted had some reservations. And that's, and because we had an excellent reservation, I mean, uh, recommendation for J&amp;J, we, I chose J&amp;J. We've had experience with another contractor that we had, we had extended back to redo some work several times, and we just didn't want to go through that again.
Is, is there a motion?
Well, if, let me ask one more question. If we had that $22,000 that we're giving away that's left on the table, wouldn't we be able to provide some additional supervision and so, and, and to, uh, and to, uh, do more work for the county?
I guess you would say that, but, uh, I don't know how we could do it. This money is all coming from the state. And, uh, so I understand where you're coming from, but we just couldn't, we, as a board, we could not, uh, go through what we've been through with another contractor.
But were people invited to bid, were companies invited to bid? But were people invited to bid, were companies invited to bid? Or was this a public uh, opening where anybody that wanted to can walk in to bid?
It was advertised in the newspaper and to people that went in.
So I, that's what I understand, is that, that this person was invited. He said back there, he was invited to bid, so why is he on your bid list if you're not gonna award him a bid?
May I say something? We went through the formal bid process from Beaufort County, and a request for proposal was issued, and that's where we got bidder responses from.
So you're saying no one was invited to bid?
The request.
Pardon?
Every qualified bidder was invited to bid. It was advertised publicly.
Any other, anything else?
Is there a motion?
I move that we, we'll make the award to the lowest bidder.
Second. That is, that, that is not what is before us.
Yes, it is. I'm not a rubber stamp. That's what you're saying, what's before us is a rubber stamp, and I'm not a rubber stamp.
Commissioner Booth.
Um, may I ask, Mr. Francisco?
References, you know, of course. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Booth.
Is your board is elected by the people aren't it?
We have three elected and two appointed.
And all of them voted?
In favor of the J and J.
Thank you.
And you, you, you wanna ask the attorney?
Mr. Francisco, we are a separate entity in the county, an elected board. Can you explain to the commissioner how we work?
Well, that's, that's correct. This is, the, the board of county commissioners is not an appellate board for your board. Your board is your board, and what they decide to do is, is their business, and that's, that's what the general statute says.
Then what, then what's our role in all this?
What, what are we, we just?
You partially fund them, I understand. What, what's, it's, it's, it's a money sort of thing. But, but they're not the, I'm sorry. Right, right. But that, that's your connection. It, it's partially uh, funded by the county.
But in this particular case, it's original county funded.
They decide who's gonna do what.
So, so why do we get into the debate?
Why are we here?
Why am I even signing the bids?
Gee. Yeah.
Why, why, why? The money has come through the county, it comes through the state.
I can tell you why it comes through the county. It comes through the county because if the board fails to perform, and the state decides that the work wasn't done properly, that it shouldn't have been paid, do you know who makes up the, the money? It's the board of county commissioners, it's the taxpayers of Beaufort County. So I, the, the question is not a rhetorical question, what are we doing here? We have the final authority on this, because we have the money. That's why the state sent the money to the county commissioners to make sure that it was done properly and that the lowest bidder received the bids.
Okay, let's, let's do this, you, you put a motion out here.
Wait a minute, a motion, I'm.
If, if you would listen to me, you, you, you'd understand what I'm saying. I said that you put a motion out here, and did you get a second?
Yeah.
So we will vote on, we will vote on, we will vote on your motion, and then we will proceed. All in favor of Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson's uh, motion to accept the lowest bid, raise your right hand. All those oppose. Four to. Three to. I'm still, I'm still stuck.
The actual thing tonight is you're voting on the budget amendment, not who they're choosing, and that's what I need to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
We're asking for a vote on a purchase order to complete the work, work.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction, so.
Motion to approve.
Alright. Have a motion, there a second? I'll second.
I have some comments.
Commissioner Richardson.
You know, I talked to a lot of people in Beaufort County, and a lot of people tell me the same thing. Now, all the stuff that's bid in Beaufort County is awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. There are several really good examples of this that I'm not gonna go into right now. If this county won't, if, if this county wants the appearance of doing business in an honest way, we need to do business in an honest way, and we're not doing it. And I, and I'm not gonna vote for this.
Any other commissioner?
The only thing we're voting on is the budget amendment, we're not vote, we're not voting on the, of contract.
We're voting on the purchase.
Purchase only, yes, we're not voting on.
Who got it?
To bid. Alright. We, you could restructure, if this is a concern for you, we could restructure the uh, the motion to not exceed a certain amount, and that would go to the lowest bidder by that amount. I mean, it is a money thing.
It's not a concern to me.
I know, but it is to us.
Well, you, you, you read your motion, and you keep them happy, because you have.
I was mentioning that.
Alright, we, you can look at it that way.
We, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion on the table to.
No, mostly, excuse me, go ahead.
To approve the uh, budget amendment, the purchase order. Raise your right hand. Those oppose. No action, we have to wait till your next meeting, when there'll be seven of us. Commissioner Richardson, the item for your pool from the considered agenda?
Yes. I, this, this. This particular item, uh, let me get over here to the right page, purchase order, page eight. This particular item is to buy eighty radios. Uh, the, the sum of the uh, expenditure is a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. And I guess I'm a little bit lost on this radio thing, because I've said in here plenty of times, are these Viper radios?
Yes, and it's forty is the quantity.
How many?
Forty.
It's not what this purchase order says. But yeah, it does, it says forty. Forty, two thousand dollars a piece, okay. But these are Viper radios.
Correct.
The life of these radios is expected to be what?
Um, really don't know. The reason that we're looking to move with these radios is not because of the radios themselves, it's because the life of the radios that we have for a dozen years has been at their end of life since December of twenty nineteen. Now, they are still functioning, but we are told by Motorola and told, you know, that, that, you know, their, their serviceable life is over, and if the Viper radio network ever has to be uh, narrow-banded again, or touched again, or reprogrammed again, then that would mean that every radio that we would have would be obsolete at the snap of a finger. So in, you know, just a brief summary, you know, we, we've actually talked about the radios over the last couple of years in the budget. Um, there was a discussion over this on one of the budget workshops. The funds were originally in the capital under vehicles. There was a discussion about how difficult it was to get vehicles at a time which the vehicles that we ordered in October of two thousand twenty, we're just receiving within the last month. So I, I gave to the commissioners that, you know, it is uncertain on the vehicle future, what sort of availability we would have. So I asked at that time for the board to entertain the, the opportunity to switch those capital funding to the radios instead of vehicles, since we knew that that was in front of us, and I was asking for us to take care of more than just piecemealing that over a couple of years, and that was approved.
Well, what, what is the warranty on these? How long are they warranty for?
Um, with the Motorola radios, the warranties, you get an initial package which is covered, and I'll be honest, a lot of the stuff in the purchase order is sort of golly good when you get it. You got to sort of dig into it. But there's, there's uh, maintenance and warranty that goes along with the package that we have. And then as long as the, the serviceable life of the radio is existing, then we still get maintenance and warranty on those that we can either just, like the calls that I get on my phone all the time. If something comes up and we're getting to ten, twelve years from now, then we can purchase recurring uh, maintenance as long as those radios have serviceable life, I hope that.
So, so unless they make changes in the signal, which is not made by us, made by the government or Motorola or whoever, we would expect these radios to last ten years?
Uh, hopefully. I mean, the radios that we have now have lasted over a dozen years. Um, and just on that, we, you know, we were fortunate enough at that point that we were able to purchase those radios, because at that time, we could use nine-one-one funds to make that purchase. But we don't have that availability anymore through the nine-one-one board, so we were looking over the last handful of years to sort of piecemeal by five, ten radios at a time. Uh, until we could do that, we got, I think, twelve radios. At this point, this would get us to the point that all uh, full-time um, law enforcement officers are covered. And then we're still gonna look to probably buy another five or ten over the next couple of years, just to get it to the point that we will have a couple of extras, and that our part-timers can have radios without us having to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve this item, is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Rest of these, office, Jennifer Pointhurst.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to, um, once again, bring up the fact that the register deeds office is running out of space and ask um, for your help to help me determine what direction we need to go. Um, right now, the only place I have to go is up, and I can't put books any higher than they are in the vault. Um, I don't know if we need to form a committee to look at available resources around us to, to rehouse the register deeds office. Um, a lot of offices across the state are outside the courthouse, and that seems to work well. So I'm, I'm here for help and suggestions.
Any commissioner?
One of the things that we're doing with the uh, jail committee is looking at the opportunity to use existing space, which includes the lower level, um, as a most of, one of the more efficient ways of expanding the jail itself. Uh, with that, uh, the thought process from the architect would be to use both your space downstairs and the, the uh, clerk of the court's space downstairs. Uh, the logical procession from that would be to move you out and put the clerk's, the court's, of the court's stuff into your existing site. So I think that's in the works. Uh, there are some other things that are, that we're talking about that sort of go along with that. I think we can incorporate what you're looking for into the jail committee, because that would be part of that, that plan if it moves forward that way.
Well, I want to back up a little bit, I probably should have started with this. Um, currently, we are filling a real estate book. We do about three, you know, and about four books a month. I have sixty slots to put books in right now. And by the end of this fiscal year, I will have used half of those, and I only have thirty more. So um, it's something that we need to consider and consider it quickly, because it's not getting any better. Even our work area behind the counter is becoming congested. Um, it's, it's sort of difficult to be doing a marriage license at one, one workstation, talking to someone about their deceased loved one's death certificate at another station, and then have someone on the telephone trying to navigate someone on the website to do all of those things at one time, and then number of papers at the same time. It's just kind of noisy and it's hard to concentrate. So um, we've outgrown that space, and we need to act quickly. Sure. I'm, I'm all for being moved out of the courthouse, but I don't want us to drag our feet. I think we need to just go ahead and start working towards finding us another place.
Well, uh, we're, so are we talking, just talking, is what we're doing?
Well, we're talking a lot, every time I talk here, we talk about it.
We're talking about a freestanding building, which really should be in short walking distance of the courthouse. So there are not many opportunities presently uh, for parcels. I can think of one, but I don't want to say it. Uh, that could, we could use for something like this. Um, using an existing building is difficult in your case because of the fire protection.
Exactly.
Aspect of it. So uh, we really need to, we really need to do something with this.
Yeah, we, we need to think, think it out and do it right. We don't want to just, just grab some space and put this in here. We want it to be right, we want to be able to grow in some of the people of Beaufort County without having to yell over someone else while we're trying to assist them. And to give them a nice place to come and visit and, and look at their public records and use those records.
Would you be willing to come to the next jail committee?
I would be.
Okay. Okay, because we will, we at that point in time should be starting to put more pen to paper in terms of plans.
Just let me know when that meeting is, and I'll be glad to be there.
How, how often does the uh, jail committee meet?
It, it was meeting monthly, but we've postponed some because we, because of the COVID, and we couldn't get the, we're at the point where the feds need to come in uh, and give us what their view of what we ought to be doing in terms of that. So we're waiting on them right now, okay? But that'll better be sooner than later.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Handelitz, purchase.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. Uh, as you noted, this, this fiscal year included capital outlay funding for the purchase of a new ambulance. Uh, and several weeks ago, Beaufort County Emergency Services put out that request for bid and received bids back from three different vendors, First Class Emergency Vehicles, uh, Select Custom Apparatus, and CW Regions. Chief Hibbert and I wanted to take an opportunity with you tonight to kind of review the comparison of those bids and seek your approval to proceed forward with the purchase of that uh, of, of the new ambulance. So I want to start on kind of recapping how we came up with the specification, what we included in our bids for ambulance. Uh, as, as we sat down and started putting in, in writing what we wanted out of an ambulance, safety of our providers and safety of the patients was our, our number one priority. Uh, our truck spent a lot of time on the road. This particular truck, when purchased, uh, is slated to go to the Bellhaven Station. That truck ran last year about sixteen thousand miles, what we would consider loaded patient, loaded patient miles, meaning sixteen thousand miles with a patient and a provider in the back. Now, when you look at that mileage, you say sixteen thousand, some people may look at that as a lot, some people may say that's not much at all. The true travel time of that truck was more around thirty-six thousand miles a year. So only about half the time that our trucks are on the road are actually loaded patient miles, because time from the station to the home and time from the hospital back to the station is not coming into play in that. So our trucks are on the road a lot. Um, and while we have a patient and a provider in the back, we're trying to keep their safety and things that we can put in the truck to ensure everybody's safe while they're in that environment. Kind of give you an example. Um, as you all know, we have cardiac monitors on our trucks. We use those cardiac monitors on just about every call. Uh, that monitor weighs about ten pounds, costs about twenty-five thousand dollars. Right now, in the back of our ambulances, that is sitting on workspace. So you can imagine what that monitor would look like if it's ever been in an accident. It becomes a ten-pound projectile in the back of our vehicle. And what are we subjecting our patients and providers to? As we look at the specs for this particular build, we have safety things like that in mind when we look at the layout and what we want to see in an ambulance, what we would like to see in there. So real quickly, we'll run through the uh, kind of different criteria of how we evaluated these. The top category there that you see specifics when you're looking at the chassis of a truck, uh, a chassis is a chassis is a chassis, right? We can all get into debating which is better, a Ford or a Chevrolet or a Dodge. That's where a lot of these come into play. The biggest pieces for us on that was the year model. We wanted to ensure that it was a type one, meaning a truck-style chassis because of the uh, the, the maintenance and less labor when it comes to replacing and doing engine work. So those are all pretty much, pretty comparisable, well comparable on that. As we step down to the warranty, you start to see some differences. Um, and, and a lot of that uh, is, it varies from manufacturer to manufacturer in what they cover. So for example, the structural warranty, the box itself. Um, CW Regions has a lifetime warranty on all components. That warranty is transferable, so as many. That warranty is transferable. So as many of you know, we, we typically like to remount our boxes. We'll, we'll put it on a truck and chassis, we'll run the miles on it, we'll refurb it, put it on another chassis, cut the cost down on the next new ambulance instead of buying this grade of ambulance each time. Uh, C W Williams has a lifetime warranty. Um, we have some manufacturers like Select that have a fifteen year on everything. Uh, First Class has a lifetime warranty, but only, only aluminum components. So a lot of the workspaces, the cabinetry, things like that are not aluminum. It's wood and that would fall under a twelve month warranty. So you see some, some comparisons or differences along that, that lines. Probably one of the biggest warranty items that we've run into in the past is the electrical warranty. As these trucks are running up and down the road, vibrating wires through chases, rubbing together, we develop shorts lighting issues. Uh, that, that has come up on several units in the past. And so you see some degree of the warranties on that as well. As you look through these bids in each category, green would be the best. So that category, red would be the worst. If they're all green, uh, it's all equal. And anything that's not highlighted fell somewhere in the middle. As we get into the next section would be the options section. A lot of these are, some of them are safety components. When we start looking at things, um, like the, like the technical mounts, those are the devices that secure our stretchers in the back of the truck, to secure our monitors in place. We have some things that we've implemented just through, through different, uh, DEA requirements and chain of custody, like a narcotics safety, we're required to adhere to certain, uh, certain standards from that licenser. Uh, all of those pretty much fell in line with the specs on those particular categories. As we start looking under options, under liquids, liquid spring suspension and aluminum wheels. Some, some people may look at that and say, well, that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, add on something that we don't particularly need. Uh, what we know is that these two items for, for a low cost upfront save us immensely in PM work, uh, later on down the road. Our current trucks have steel wheels, traditional suspension. We're rebuilding the front end of them about every twelve thousand miles. These liquid field cuts down on suspension repairs. The aluminum wheels dissipate heat better, so brakes tend, tend to go longer. Everybody that we have searched out and helping with building these specs and trying to get information from have all steered us in that direction. You need to do this upfront. It'll save you down the road on maintenance. Delivery times, uh, you do see some variance in those. A lot of the shorter delivery times are companies that have a chassis on hand. I'm sure everybody's aware of the supply and demand of vehicles. So the, the companies that have the chassis on hand can turn it quicker. The ones that can't, uh, have a longer, longer time, um, on that. We specifically broke out the safety and design of the box layout. Uh, we had actually in this case, the lowest bid being first class was the furthest away from those bid designs and safe, safety aspects that we'd like to see in the back of the truck. All the others were pretty close, uh, in, in line with, with meeting all of those, um, those specifications in the bid pack. When we look at just the design of the truck, and a lot of people say, well, ambulance is an ambulance, right? It doesn't matter where you sit in the back. It does when you're trying to take into account your provider being in a, in a, in a seat belt during transport and still being able to administer care. Uh, if you haven't seen any TV shows or Chicago Fire or anything like that, when you look in the back of the ambulance, you've got the, the patient who's sitting on the stretcher looking out the back door. And then sitting behind that patient is the provider. And that's typically been the case in the EMS. That's where the provider typically sat is behind the patient during our transport. We have extended transport times and there's still care that we have to provide during that transport. So we need our providers to be able to sit next to the patient, to be able to reach them, to touch them. More importantly, to reach the equipment in the truck that they may need to use to provide that patient care. So when we start looking at the safety aspects of the truck itself, um, that's where you see these differences. Some trucks are set up and cabinetry and seating positions and restraints allow providers to do that. Other trucks do not. So as we, we look through the rest, um, we had some, some vendors that included graphics, some did not. Uh, some we identified different locations for our oxygen tubing to connect. Uh, some, some included it, some did not. Uh, so you do start to see some separation between the three bids that we received on that. As we evaluated in totality, First Class was the cheapest bid. Uh, their, their bid as submitted was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That did not include graphics on the side of the truck. That did not include a narcotics safe that's compatible with our software that we put in the bid specification. It also did not meet a lot of the safety, safety specifications that we wanted to see in the back of the trucks. C W Williams was the highest at two sixty-nine. Again, they were some, bit deficient on some things. The refrigerator, narcotics safe were not included in theirs. Uh, Select Customs was the best middle ground of those two. Uh, they weren't the cheapest. They didn't meet every specification that we had. But they met pretty much all the safety specifications that we put in it, with the exception of a storage drawer that IV needles, syringes and things like that, uh, were included. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, uh, between Jeff and I. Our recommendation is to proceed with the Select Custom F five fifty for two forty-eight, two seventy-seven.
I have some questions.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Richardson.
Let's see, we're talking about, when we say ambulance, we're talking about buying the truck and the box, both.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. You're rebuilding front ends over twelve thousand miles?
Yes, sir.
You have a misdesigned, misspec piece of junk to begin with.
So the, in the past, we have bought the ambulance with the van style front end. It's an F four fifty ambulance with a van style front end. By the time you get that truck with the box on it and loaded with equipment, we are at the max load rating of that truck. So we're, we're already bumping the max capacity of that.
Why are you doing that?
That was before us, sir.
Why are you doing that? Well, what are you doing now?
That's what we're trying to.
How much is the capacity of the truck you're buying now compared to the load?
Uh, right now, our load is approximately anywhere from twelve to thirteen thousand pounds. The load rating on the new truck we're going to get is nineteen thousand pounds. Whereas the old truck is roughly eleven thousand five hundred pounds grossing away.
Uh, why can't you buy a heavier rated truck front end?
That's what we're doing now, sir.
No, no, heavier than the nineteen thousand?
But that's, you're looking at freight liners and you're looking at about a half a billion dollar truck.
Yeah, but that half a billion dollar truck has a front end that's rebuildable and you're not gonna have to rebuild it. If you're ever twelve thousand miles.
The, the other thing is there is a threshold because we are utilizing other stations about the size of a truck that we can fit into our existing stations. So that does limit us on the size of the truck that we can, that we can spec. If, if we went with something like the International Chassis that has that much heavier front end on it, it wouldn't fit in the stations that we currently occupy. Some, some of them.
What, is it too wide?
Some may be too tall, some may be too long. So for example, in the Bellhaven Station, which is.
You can bobtail a chassis.
But those, those are adding on cost to it. You certainly can. Those would add on a substantial cost to the truck.
Well, I don't understand why we're buying something we could keep maintaining, keep, keep having high maintenance costs on. That's what you're telling us, uh, that we've been doing is buying things with high maintenance. I wondered about this.
So that's, that's what we're trying to be better prepared for is to have a truck that's more.
Why do you need a new ambulance? Let me ask you that.
The one we currently have, the one this is replacing is a two thousand twelve with almost two hundred thousand miles on it. And the transmission and drive train needs serious repair at the moment.
Is it an automatic transmission?
Yes, sir. So Duramax would announce.
I just think that we're misspecing these trucks. I think you're better off to buy something that's a little more expensive, that will last longer and give you better service than what you're buying. There's a, there's a lot of different, I happen to have bought a few trucks in my day, so I do know what I'm talking about.
And, and when we, when we look at our, when we look at our old trucks, I, I, I didn't want to make a point. I told you those were purchased prior to our time. They were also purchased according to the requirements they were required to carry at the time. So EMS, O E M S has changed supplies, our equipment weights have changed. The amount of equipment we're putting on the truck has changed. In two thousand twelve, this truck may not have been at, at the capacity that it is now. But now with the items that we have to carry, it is and it's become an operational problem for us.
What if, what if you rebuilt what you have?
We, we are unaware of a way that would meet that we are unaware of a way to make a four fifty van style chassis and replace the suspension in a way that would exonerate us of the liability of those aftermarket repairs. So could, could someone do?
Buy repair parts? People, there aren't people that rehab these things?
Yes, sir. And we've been doing it about every twelve thousand miles.
No, I mean the whole ambulance. Why, why refurbish the whole ambulance?
I'm not exactly following.
But you're saying you're gonna have to continue to rebuild a front end over twelve thousand?
No, no, sir, not with this new truck. That's the reason. Uh, our old trucks are top three ambulances with a van style chassis. This new ambulance we're buying is a type one sitting on a truck chassis that's independent from the box. Well, to, to answer your question, these, these specs, taking account the issues that you're mentioning and, and, and putting some things in place that from all of our research and talking with other agencies who were using them, have minimized those repairs because they included these items in it.
Have, have you had, uh, people to, like the reps that sell the chassis to come and talk to you?
We, we have and, and we have also.
I'm not talking about the local salesman. I'm talking about the factory rep.
Yes. And, and we have also reached out to other users of fleet vehicle in our county beyond this ambulance. So, uh, Mr. Boyd, uh, I spoke to him quite extensively about the PM. He uses a lot of the Ford chassis, everything from F two fifty to F five fifty, which we're specing. And I've talked a lot to him in, in comparing gas versus diesel, PM cost, part cost, availability. Uh, he was very insightful on giving us some information. So we, we have, we have made an effort to try to get as much information as we can. And we, we are just in, in, being full disclosure, we're kind of hesitant on taking word of mouth just from the salesman, as I'm sure you all agree.
Well, you don't talk to the salesman for something like this. You talk to the factory reps.
Yes, sir. So, so we have thought, we've, we've taken advantage of multiple outlets to gain that information. Yes, sir.
The factory reps, not salesmen. You can call them and talk to them.
Yes, sir. I, I, I'll call them, I'll call and talk to wheel coach. Uh, actually on the truck itself, we actually talked to a form of other company about the fluids. Biggest thing we want to know is advantageous to fluid spring suspension underneath it, how well that will save us maintenance on that truck. And they were real good to work with us, email us back and forth. Then we went to the wheel coach. Wheel coach representatives had talked with us, answered questions for us. Uh, Medics had offered, they offered to fly us out to their, uh, production plant to even look at and talk with the reps in person. Uh, we didn't feel like it's necessary for us to go out there and look. But in our bid specification, there was a lot of parameters we, that we collected from these representatives and added to our bid specification to make sure we get something that's safe for our people and the food, patients and care.
I have a problem with buying something that, that puts two hundred thousand miles on it and needs to be thrown in the junk pile. That shows we didn't buy the right thing to begin with. Uh, we need to buy something that when it needs, when, that you're coming in here ever so often and saying, it's time to rebuild this ambulance, not throw it in the junk pile and buy another one.
And that, that was including in our considerations of the bid specs. And one of the things that we asked for was a lifetime warranty on the box itself. Uh, because the box does, and when we talk about rebuilding a truck, one of the easiest and most feasible way to do that is take the box off and put it on a new chassis. Uh, so when you start rebuilding a chassis that's got two hundred thousand miles on it, there is a point in which it's just better stewardship of our money to say, put a new chassis under it. That's one of the reasons why we specifically asked for the lifetime warranties on a lot of these components, so that we would be in a better position that when this chassis hits two hundred thousand miles, we can take the box off, put it on another chassis and continue to use.
No, that's not the right answer. The right answer is when it hits two hundred thousand miles, we rebuild the chassis. It's not that expensive.
But those are prices that, that, that I am not familiar with.
Well, I mean, I can think of the parts. All you need is some bushings and some springs is, is, there's not that much to it. I mean, we're looking at this from the standpoint of we're buying a disposable item. And I don't think I won't spend the county's money to buy a disposable item. Cause I know the equipment business well enough to know that when you get into the heavies like this, you rebuild them. You don't go buy new.
Commissioner Reddick.
Uh, first of all, let me commend you for the fine work you did here, uh, in putting this together. There, pardon?
I said it right. Go ahead.
This, you're specing this out at nineteen cross vehicle eight, GBW?
Yes, sir.
And your current is eleven five?
Yes.
So we got an eighty percent increase in the capability of this truck.
What we have.
From what we got right now, that, that's falling apart. Okay? So that, that solves that problem going forward. Um, having been in this business, I can tell you that, uh, you've done, you've done some great work here in putting this together. And I fully support this.
Commissioner Walker.
What will happen to the truck this is replacing? It'll just be sold for salvage?
Yes, sir.
What do you think kind of money will you get from that?
That's hard to say in this market.
Yeah.
You know, it's really hard to say in this market. I, I, I'm not sure, Jeff, do you have any research?
No.
I'd like to say too, that you just didn't obviously throw a dart at the dartboard. You studied on this thing.
Yes, sir. Very, very much. We've been studying almost a year. We actually started with a steering committee of putting together a people who work on the truck, their needs and stuff. And then we looked at safety aspect. We've been doing almost a year to get this bid specification. Once we finalize and get this, this is gonna be our bid specification from now on.
I think you identified your shortcomings and you've addressed them and, um, I, I seen a problem with it.
We make a motion that we approve the recommendation to purchase the ambulance from Select.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? For two, it passes.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, we're fifteen minutes behind. We'll take our break from seven fifteen to seven thirty. At this time, we will have our finance officer, Ms. Anita.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Um, you have a packet in front of you with a bit of financial information that I'm gonna review very quickly this evening. The first item you have on top there is a T R four one net collections report. I believe you saw this for the first time last month. This is the report that comes out of Faragut. It was, uh, run as of today and it shows you the two thousand twenty-one tax levy information. You can see there, we have a net levy that's been billed of the thirty-four point nine four nine million dollars. As of today, six point two four three million of that levy has been collected or seventeen point eight seven percent, leaving us with an uncollected balance of twenty-eight point seven million. And so I went back and looked at the last year's levy or the two thousand twenty levy at this point in time last year. And we were at sixteen point eight percent collection. So we're a whole one percent ahead of where we were this time last year with collections. So kudos to the tax collector and his folks for working hard to get those tax dollars in, um, as early as possible. And then at the bottom left, um, just showing, demonstrating there what I'm expecting, the difference between where we're gonna end up with the collections versus what we have budgeted. And so I'm estimating with our collection rate, uh, it's historically been a little better than ninety-eight percent. That will collect about thirty-four point three million. We've budgeted thirty-three point seven fifty. So I am expecting we'll have a bit of a surplus around five hundred and seventy-six thousand for the tax levy.
What's your budgeting, what's your looking under last month? We're gonna be less than budgeted?
Um, I think that. Yes, I do believe.
Yeah.
Things have changed. Oh, things can change come up. Got better and improved. That's why. It's just an estimate. It's a budget. So we just look at it, you know, from month to month. Um, moving right along on sales tax, the next sheet there, um, we did receive information today from the association about our August sales, which will be distributed the fifteenth of this month. And you can see it highlighted there in yellow in that top left table. And you can see it highlighted there in yellow in that top left table. Um, this is the sixth straight month that we've received over one million dollars in sales tax. You know, which is quite, uh, impressive, I think. Um, the statewide, uh, growth for this month was twenty percent over the same period last year. And you can see we were up fourteen percent. So we did lie behind the state just a little bit this month in the growth, but still fourteen percent growth year over year in sales tax distribution is, is kinda unbelievable. But that's what we were last year. If you look at where we finished up last year compared to the year before, it was fourteen percent. And where we're trending this year is the same, fourteen percent up. So if you look over to the right, that small box there again, I try to look at what, you know, it's trending at, or rolling at, or annualizing at compared to what we budgeted. And you can see it's annualizing at twelve point six million, we budgeted ten point six. So if it keeps going like it is, and we keep getting million dollar distributions, we're probably gonna have a large surplus in sales tax. But then again, it's, I don't know yet, you know? I'm trying, I'm trying to look into the future and try to anticipate what might happen, but I really don't know what's gonna happen, so we just have to kinda take it month to month and see where we end up. Any questions on sales tax here? Um, the next page, that's the remaining, uh, general fund revenues there. You've got your restricted DSS health revenues, state and federal, um, revenues, your sales and services, investment earnings, nothing spectacular there to point out. Um, the thing I did want to mention here is, so we're four months into the fiscal year, July through October thirty first, and we've collected eleven point one million dollars in revenue. Well, if you go back a couple more pages and you look at the expenditure side, two more pages over, we spent year to date nineteen point three five three million. So that's when we talk about, you know, one of the important reasons to have a healthy fund balance is because there is a gap during the beginning of the fiscal year where your expenditures are going to exceed your revenues until all those tax dollars come in. And this, I think this demonstrates that really well. We, we've got a eight to, eight point two million dollar gap right now between our revenue and expenditures that our fund balancing is, um, supporting until we can get those tax revenues in in November, December. So moving right along, you know, the last few pages are the water and the solid waste, our enterprise funds. And again, nothing that I really need to point out there, they're exactly where I would expect them to be. You can see water fund is at twenty five point two percent, um, collected on the revenues, and ironically, twenty five point two percent expended on our expenditure side. And then for solid waste, about twenty two percent on the revenues. Again, these revenues are mostly, um, the annual solid waste fee. That is a fee, not a tax, however it is billed on the tax bill, um, just to improve the collectibility of that. And so we expect most of our revenue to come in the next couple of months. And on the expenditure side, um, that eighty six percent is way out of white because we issued our purchase order to Republic for the entire year, but actual expenditures are at twenty three point five percent for the year on solid waste. Any questions on the financial report for this month? Yes, sorry.
On the revenue side, under the restricted, the state, state DSS health other, and on the federal side, one would, is there a reason that they lag what you would expect that? It, it's, we're a third of the year through.
Right.
So thirty three percent, and these are down in the teens.
They do lag, um, I know DSS does what they call fifteen seventy one report, and that's where they have to say, get in all the October expenditures. And they don't file that report until like the end of November. And then you wait for the state to, uh, to, to review that, analyze that, and then distribute. It's much like the sales tax, that's three months behind. I don't think the lag is quite that great, but it's a similar type thing.
Anyone else have any questions? Your next item.
Thank you. Next item we have is, I thought it would be prudent tonight to just kinda do a brief review of the ARC funds. We have taken some action and done some votes at the last couple of meetings. And I felt like we needed to kinda put things down on paper so we can see what projects we've identified, or you've identified and designated as, um, using the ARC funds to pay for. And then also, I wanted you to ratify your actions on those capital project funds to be able to pay for those projects. So on page one thirty, just to, um, review the information here, we received nine point one one million dollars in American Rescue Plan funding. We have actually, well, we've received half of that back in May of twenty twenty one. We're expected to receive the remaining fifty percent before May of twenty twenty two. So, but we have a budgeted for the full nine point one one million. That money had to be put in a special revenue fund, and it's sitting there in an interest-bearing account in a separate fund in our accounting system. You all came along the last couple of months and designated three general fund projects that you wanted to use ARC funding to pay for, and they are the jail architect fees totaling twelve thousand dollars, broadband in the amount of four million dollars, and a multipurpose building at a cost of one point five million dollars. So if you turn to page one thirty nine, I just want to show you where we have put together a capital project ordinance totaling five point five one two million dollars to pay for those three projects there. So what we're doing is we're taking five point five one two million out of that special revenue fund, we're transferring that money to a general fund capital project fund to pay for those three projects. In the same manner, you designated six water projects to use ARC funds to pay for, and that is on page one thirty seven. So those total, and let's just review those right quick, so we'll make sure we're all on the same page. There's a SCADA system replacement at an estimated cost of seven hundred thousand. Uh, we're doing a water line extension to Swan, uh, Point Mobile Home Park for a hundred eighty seven thousand, four elevated storage tank mixers for a hundred twelve thousand, directional drills on Highway ninety nine, two hundred eighty five thousand. And then we're doing various lineup grades and flushing, two hundred fifty thousand, and then the railroad crossing water line issue, seventy five thousand. So those projects total one million six oh nine. And you can see on page one thirty seven, again, we're moving one point six oh nine million out of a special project fund into a water capital project fund to pay for those projects there. Now, the one thing I do want to remind everybody of, because it's been a year and a half ago, the CARES funding, the one point nine million dollars that we got in twenty twenty. We, we used, um, EMS salary and benefits to demonstrate that we were spending those funds on that, which really freed up that one point nine million, one point nine million and added it to our fund balance. Then we came back along and we identified about ten projects that we said, you know, these are things we wanna do that are COVID-related, that we think it's appropriate to spend this new fund balance money on, um, these projects. And you might remember, there were things like, um, doing the HVAC cleaning, the filters, uh, the two generators that we did, one at this building, one at the admin building. We put up the drive-through shelter at the health department. Um, we did an essential, uh, bonus for the employees, essential government worker bonus. And then we also did, uh, we set aside five hundred thousand dollars for broadband. And hopefully everybody recalls that and remembers that. So an additional budget amendment that we have here is that we need to go ahead and appropriate that five hundred thousand dollars that rolled into the general fund fund balance and move it over to that capital project fund that we had set up for broadband. And that's on page one thirty six.
Is there a motion? We have a motion, is there a second? Discussion?
Yeah, I have one discussion. I, you know, I'm still of the opinion that one of the dumbest things that we've ever done, aside from building the road on the, on the, the full, full lane high pass on the west side of Washington where nobody can use it, building the school system twice the size that it needs to be so that schools are sitting there half occupied, shutting down the hospital in Bellhaven and giving away the Beaufort County Hospital. Broadband ranks with all of those really dumb things. This is gonna be a disaster before it's over with. The technology is very rapidly making this project obsolete. The example is that last week, saw an article that said that, um, was Verizon, was bragging that they already had a half a million customers for their satellite broadband. All of the major companies are coming out with satellite broadband. Elon Musk is putting up, uh, satellites twenty four at a time, on and on and on it goes. This is something that's gonna be like the cell phone made the hard lines, not quite obsolete, but essentially obsolete, you're gonna be in the same position with this. Plus, the only reason that the government ever wanted broadband, and the government pushed broadband right out of the Obama administration is where this came from, is so that they could spy, control, and keep tabs on the American people. This is really a bad deed.
Any other commissioner? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Court, Katie?
Yes, sir. Um, traditionally, we've held a, an employee appreciation luncheon once a year, uh, for the last couple of years. And this year, it was suggested that, um, because of the uncertainty, a- after speaking with the civic center and some vendor, food vendors, they couldn't guarantee that, um, they'd be able to go forward even on the day of, if we were to choose a lunch date. So management is recommending allocating fifteen dollars per employee to the individual departments to hold a departmental luncheon. Um, and then additionally, it's recommended that in lieu of decorations, venures, small Christmas gifts, that kinda thing, um, that twenty seven dollars and seven cents payment be issued to each employee, um, in their paycheck on December third, which will equate to about twenty five dollars per, well, which it will equate to twenty five dollars per employee.
Have a motion, is there a second? I'll second.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Is, you said that's twenty five dollars per employee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is, do we have any more, uh, A R P money? Do we have any more A R P money, uh?
Oh, we, we have one point nine million dollars left in ARC funding. Um, i- if you're thinking of some type of employee payment, then I would look back at the CARES funding. There was about forty seven thousand dollars left in the CARES funding. And I think that it's more appropriate to use CARES funding money for that than ARC funding.
Well, well, is it possible that we could increase that, divide that? CARES money that's left, in the twenty five dollars, maybe make it forty, fifty for employees? I don't have it bad.
I think you could definitely do that because at this point, it's not even CARES funding, it's just general fund balance, and, and that's money, just unassigned money that you can, as a board, designate how to spend.
Well, I'll also amend my motion, that's appropriate. Also, amend my motion, that's appropriate to, uh, increase that twenty five dollars, but whatever amount that you have, that forty thousand won't surpass it, if that's prob-
Doing a quick calculation, I think we could bring it up to a hundred and fifty dollar per employee payment.
I make that motion, amend it.
And I'll steal a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, look, I didn't mind the forty dollars, but this is a blatant example. This is general fund money, this is not CARES Act money. That's what the finance officer said, it's been, it's been converted from the money it was that they gave us to begin with. It's not general fund money. We have never, in the twenty six years that I've been here, dipped into fund for a spur of the moment bonus of this type. And once we start this, it just keeps going. We need to back up to the forty dollar justification, and we need, we need to, uh, we need to value the taxpayers of Beaufort County's money a whole lot higher than we value it right now.
Well, we must also- We must also value our employees. And, and, and big, leaving a lot, probably ninety five percent of our employees are Beaufort County residents. But, but I would more or less, I would back it down to fifty dollars, make it fifty dollars. Because you twenty, I mean, they, they deserve something. They have worked very, very hard doing this, uh, had done it, and everybody been rewarded. And it's time for them to be rewarded.
Okay, and I'll steal, hold you a second for the fifty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, there was already awards made out of money for people doing exceptional service during the pandemic. I mean, we're setting a really bad precedent here, we need to go back to the forty dollars, which is hard to ju-, let me finish, sir. We need to go back to the forty dollars, which is hard to justify on, on its own. I was wavering on that, but I was willing to do it. But when you start dipping into the general fund as a honey pot to start rewarding employees without any justification whatsoever on limb, that, that's not right.
I mean, this thing's something that you're gonna blow a gasket in your head, it's just for vote. I mean, whether it passes or not, we don't know, you just down and then down, and we don't know. Let me finish, sir. I don't say, well, don't you flip your mouth, don't you flip your mouth up when I'm talking. I, I know those- But what I'm trying to say is, I mean, you don't run this whole board, it's, it's, it's settled up here tonight, and if it fails, it fails. I mean, that's just the bottom line, if it fails, and I'm not gonna die if it fails, and I hope you don't die if it fails.
Mr. Chairman, what I wanna say to you, Commissioner Booth, is I'm amazed at your talus disregard and unconcern saying it doesn't matter to you what happens on a vote like this. Every vote is important, and you need to get your head in the right place where you're making decisions for the taxpayers of Beaufort County instead of rewarding your buddies.
But you ought not say anything about rewarding your buddies, 'cause you got the best reputation at doing that of anybody. I mean, you, you the most filthy man up here.
All right, we have a motion and, and a second.
Yeah, I said something, I haven't had anything. Uh, I, I thank you, uh, Commissioner Booth, for, for bringing up the, the CARES Act money, 'cause we wouldn't have known if you had brought that up, that was in the general fund. Having said that, that's general fund money, that's, uh, money we can use for just about anything. We, we can give some of that money back to the taxpayer if we wanted to.
We do.
We, we did the employee taxpayer, right, yeah, always. I, I, I like the twenty five dollars, I can go as much as forty, but that's gonna be my limit as well. But I thank you anyway for bringing that up, or, or I would have not known that it was in the general fund, and I know that now, and from, from henceforth, I would be looking to get that money allocated to a, a very special use for the taxpayer, all the taxpayers.
All right, all, all in favor, Commissioner Booth's motion for fifty dollars to the employees, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four to, it passed. All right.
Mr. Chairman, just, I, I just need to clarify, I just wanna clarify that Commissioner Booth included in that the, the, the individual meal stuff at the department head level. Was that included or not, or can you take a, an additional vote on that as well? Because it was originally fifteen to do individuals at the department head level for, for meals, and then the other piece, so there are actually two pieces of that.
I, I thought it was just the fifty dollars, that's just the fifty dollars, that's it.
Okay, so y- you don't wanna do any meal for it, no?
No.
Okay.
Here, Mr. Manager, is your item. Broadband negotiation.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, um, just, there really isn't any update on this. I have had conversations, uh, with our partner- Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, just, there really isn't any update on this. I have had conversations, uh, with our partner, River Street. In fact, I had a conversation with, um, Coltrane, actually Saturday morning. Um, they're continuing to watch items that are coming along. There may be some federal funding that, that may be appropriate. So they're continuing to watch that, and, uh, and we'll come back to you when we have any additional information.
Thank you.
Have you heard, did you hear anything from Keith? I have not heard anything back from, from that information that we sent to, I've never seen a kid while asking him about the current, um, great grant bill. W- what I'll tell you is if you've been reviewing the, the, the information you get from the Association County Commissioners, there are a ton of bills out there that have information about broadband. They don't know whether any of those are gonna move. They're anticipating that once the budget comes out, there may be some language in the budget that will address some of those broadband issues. But they're not sure if any of those individual bills are gonna move forward.
Okay, the cable channel broadcast equipment?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, members of the board, um, at the last meeting, we talked about the cable broadcast and reached out suddenly, and we had some negotiations with them. And they've agreed, um, to allow us to have access to that cable channel, essentially run it ourselves. Um, so in order to do that, what we're currently doing is we're dropping off the DVD with them, and they're putting in, they're putting it in and they're playing it. What this would do is this would essentially give you ownership of the peg channel. Um, and you would be able to run it, uh, program it, broadcast off of it, and, and do like you would normally do. Um, in order to do that, we would have to have some additional equipment. That would be a Hypercaster B one hundred, uh, license for that and support. What that would do is that piece of equipment would be, would be at the head end, uh, of the cable company. Uh, we would, we would remote into that through the internet. We would upload videos. We would schedule videos. Um, and we would be responsible for how that channel is broadcast. Um, so you see there that, uh, it's a total of about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. There are existing funds for that. Um, so if you so choose to move forward, that's what it would be for this new level of service. I want to tell you that I had a conversation with one of their engineers. And the reason that the broadcast is what the broadcast is, is those are analog channels. They're not digital channels. So it doesn't matter what we send to them. It's coming out as analog. Um, they are currently converting some of their channels over. Obviously, they're gonna convert those type channels last. They're gonna convert their, their, uh, their revenue generating channels, uh, to high definition before they do that. And he said, once they had an opening, uh, then they would certainly move ours over to a high definition, but at this time, it's, it's analog channels.
Commissioner Deppard.
Uh, sc- considering the standards, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars does not sound, uh, too much. However, I would like to be fairly well assured that, um, the digital, uh, representation that we make of these meetings will acco- be accommodated by whatever changes that they make later on. Is there any way we can get an assurance on that?
I mean, all I can tell you is what the engineer told me, and he said that as soon as they had channels available, they would convert ours to a digital channel, but until they get channels.
Sixteen thousand five hundred, uh, which we're paying them for a service more than anything else, and as, as well as the, what little equipment. I'm sure some of that's gotta be service oriented. Is all equipment oriented?
It's, it's equipment, and it's a license, and it is support.
Okay, so license and support. So that will insu- hopefully ensure us that what we give them at the very top quality, we could probably get a four K if we wanted to with the equipment we have, uh, that they'll be able to broadcast at, at their, whatever their norms are at that time. I mean, if their norms are ten eighty, they can do ten eighty. If it's seven twenty, they can do seven twenty. If it's two K, they can do two K.
Yeah, all I can say to you is the engineer said that we're currently on a analog channel, and until, until they have capacity in their system to convert ours to a digital channel, then we're gonna be analog. When they convert to digital, I assume we'll be at whatever highest level they're broadcasting their regular home, so.
Okay, well, you, okay. Is there any way we can get insurance for that?
Several months ago, we, we were discussing how to, um, inform the residents, and I, I looked at my mother because she doesn't have a computer. She doesn't have a, a smartphone. She has a flip phone. And so, um, a lot of this information that we wish to get to the, that, that type of, of, of public, she's not there. She does get cable. She does, does watch. And I remember years ago, when suddenly, oh, not suddenly, it was COPS cable or whatever. For a started, they, they use that page as a, just a rotational information page, and I could foresee this happening there. But I mean, you know, like made in Bothell County graphics. You all you have to do is throw that on there. And it might be, uh, you know, some art for somebody, but it's not that bad of work. I've, I've done that stuff before. So I'd love to see this happen because it does reach a person that's not gonna get the, I mean, if you, you're flushing hydrants somewhere, you can put that on there. So you, we, it's a great way to inform Bothell County.
Commissioner Booth.
Is that gonna be on this? Oh, excuse me. Is that gonna be on the chan- uh, channel five? Or is it gonna be on the city's, uh, government channel?
This, this will be a separate channel. The city still has their channel right now. I think that's seven, I think, and this would be, this would be on the basic level. I think it's channel five.
Who, who is gonna, who's gonna program, who's gonna set the program for this if we do this? And, uh, and how's the program gonna be set?
Well, right now, it's, it will, if, if this goes forward and we start this process, then we'll prob- we'll, we'll obviously bring back some guidelines for recommendations from the board to give us some policies relating to that, about what goes on it, what doesn't go on it. Um, and then it would be programmed and managed by someone out of my office, someone, uh, some of our I T folks. Um, towards the last meeting, I was gonna bring you back a position, and I'm gonna bring you back another position. Um, I've heard this board say that, uh, we've, we had issues with getting information out. Um, so I'm gonna bring you back a position. It's Communication Director. They would do this. They would manage these meetings. They would put out information. They would manage our website. They would do all those things. They were currently bits and pieces. I'm doing a little bit. Somebody's doing a little bit. Somebody else is doing a little bit. We don't have a consistent and concise work done. So, um, the piece, the two pieces of that is we'll bring you back some policies because the board needs to have some policies on exactly what gets played on this channel. Uh, and they have some guidance. I mean, there's certain things you can. You can't put commercial things on there. It can only be government, uh, related information. Uh, but a- as Commissioner Walker said, there is a, this, this, uh, this software will allow us to do billboards, that scrolling billboard kind of stuff. Um, it's, in fact, all it is, is it's PowerPoint presentation. You put together a PowerPoint presentation, and it scrolls that PowerPoint presentation. Um, but if you want to do this right, um, then you need to dedicate someone who's in charge of it, who looks after it. And it's not just this. There's a whole lot more stuff that goes on in this county that, uh, that needs to be managed instead of the piece of the way which we're managing it now.
We're, we're talking about a channel that's gonna play something twenty-four hours a day.
That's correct. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, um, they would want you to have that programmed at least twenty-four hours a day.
Well, let me give you a little history on this. These, this channel belonged to Bothell County way back when. It, it's, it's really our channel. It's set up under some kind of an agreement uh, somewhere with the people. The city of Washington has a similar channel that they own. It's their channel. So, you know, uh, suddenly, they really didn't give us anything. They just returned what was ours because we had a ban, essentially abandoned it.
Well, this, I think the city owns theirs with the chamber, and there's another person involved or a group that's involved. So, but they had to buy this equipment too, and it's up in their, the city, uh, offices. That's where, and that's where they feed it in there.
Wasn't that channel good? Wasn't that channel, the, the channel that you said you gave us, was that the one that they was negotiating on a contract?
This is it, yeah. This is something in franchise.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
We don't, we, we don't have franchise agreements anymore to cable companies. The state took over that ten, twelve years ago. So, um, there was initially, when you negotiated those things with franchise agreements, that's correct. But the state took over those, umpteen years ago, so we don't have franchises anymore. You will hear, you will still hear that being said occasionally, and people look at us and go, there's a problem with my cable, and, and they say it's franchise. We don't have franchise agreements anymore. The state took over all of us.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here now, all in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero. But it says just item for discussion.
Yeah, well, all I do is just keep them, you know, the public library, uh, and, you know, well, these days they're gonna change the rules on some of these and say, oh, by the way, we call these things up. So we don't know what policy you're gonna do from one minute to the next. So I want to keep this out there.
And then the mega sites. I want to keep that out there too. Thank you. Um, the, um, so that, that's all I wanted to do was have an honorable mention on that. Video recordings of meetings, I think we've already done the head. We can move on. Uh, deputies, I believe that this shows that there are thirteen vacancies within the sheriff's department, if I'm reading this correctly. Uh, if that's different, Charlie, let us know. Uh, so moving on, I'm moving through this stuff pretty fast. Uh, the status, uh, uh, of all litigation involving the county, uh, and that's a, everything is full on. I don't know how we can discuss this without going into closed session. Well, you know.
You, I can give you numbers if you want. Numbers, I, that, you know, we, we've got some, uh, new cases that have come in where the county has been sued. Uh, nothing very serious. Um, having to do with right of ways, new bridges, uh, taking, taking some land. Um, and the owners of the land owed back taxes. Uh, filed one answer that I've got two others that were going, they give us a whole year to file an answer of those. Cause it's, uh, they are, uh, Department of Transportation.
You mean the Department of Transportation took the land, back taxes are owed on the land?
They are in the process of taking the land. They have filed their complaint, uh, to take the land, and they named Bothell County because a, uh, a search of the title reveals that we are doing some of it.
We have a lien on it, so we become part.
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
So there, there's three of those. Um, we've got our, um, litigation Bothell County versus America, Amerisorsberg and Drug Corporation, and approximately twenty other, uh, defendants were involved in that litigation, uh, still and will be for the civil future. Um, you've got two wrongful termination claims, uh, against the sheriff's department. Uh, they're being handled by the Womble Firm in Mississauga, uh, been, been passed out, uh, to them by our, uh, insurer. We have one lawsuit for death in the jail against the, uh, sheriff's office that's still pending. That's also, uh, defended by the Womble Firm in Mississauga. Um, there's been a motion. Last I heard, there was a motion for summary judgment pending, uh, for the judges. Uh, and that's been several months ago, so far as I know, there's not been, uh, nothing, nothing done with it so far. That's, uh, that's pretty much it. Right now, we're not doing, uh, any of the other, uh, claims uh, for taxes and for sales and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, so, yeah, that's always, okay, but that's all the suits that we've got against the county. Does that include social services and anything they may have, the health department, anything they may have?
No.
Does not include cases that would be going over there, those two places?
It, well, it would, it would be in the health department. I'm not aware of it.
Oh, okay.
With the health department right now.
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted, just an update.
Okay. You might. Commissioner.
Uh, which one have I got?
Oh, you, you're done. I'll tell you. Commissioner Deppard.
Okay. I'm gonna speak in defense of defending our sovereign southern border. Some of you may say this is not our business. I will tell you it is our business because we spend a lot of money getting illegal aliens that come to this area. We educate their children. We find that they're getting benefits that they shouldn't be getting, uh, that we're paid for by the folks that have lived here and made this country. And while I support immigrants, I support them coming to this country the right way. And that's a process, and the process is not only for the people from south of us, but for the entire world that want to come here. The entire world cannot come and live in America. Our, we cannot support the world just because there's, there's governments that are poor. And, and I would argue if we keep going down the road we've been going with our government in the last ten months, there could be a whole lot of folks that don't want to come here anymore. You, uh, there's been a miscalculation by the Democratic Socialist Party that thinks that if we allow a- all these folks from south of, of the four states that border our southern border, then they will be able to forever change the demographics of, of this nation. And by resettling these people into our, 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 uh, construct of our democratic republic, that they will be able to never lose another election. What we're finding is that people that are Hispanic and living in America, a greater propensity of them now want the southern border to be managed because they're seeing their quality of life go down the tubes lately. And this does, did not make my, uh, resolution because it just happened this week. The Biden Harris administration want to give over four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think upwards of that, to maybe four hundred fifty thousand dollars to people who were wrongly separated for being in our country illegally. That's driving a lot of folks that care about our nation just nuts. And it shows a great propensity by this administration to disparage the rule of law that has been the foundation of this republic since our inception. So, basically, I'm gonna read this because this will make my argument, and I would expect to get a six oh vote. Because the rule of law is important from wherever you sit and wherever you stand. Because if you think that, that a two-tiered legal system whi- which benefits one or more of us is gonna make this nation stronger, it's not. It will tear it down to a point that there will be insurrection, real insurrection in this nation. Now, I don't know where it's gonna come from, but there, it will be that way. The only way we as a people can be assured that we can live free is for the laws to be applied equally, and right now, they are not. I think I've summed up a lot of that in my resolution. I'll begin by reading it now. Uh, in defense of defending our sovereign southern border, whereas it is a sworn duty of the executive branch to defend our sovereign souver- southern border and to remain vigilant in that charge, just as our republic's north border with Canada is alternately being enforced. And whereas the previous Trump administration did vigorously enforce the defense of our southern border, of the southern border, even while beleaguered by the fake Russia collusion, collusion investigation and the restriction of proper funding by pro-open border Democratic Socialist-controlled Congress. And whereas the Biden Harris administration did enact a series of new open border initiatives immediately after taking office as a means to fulfill their campaign promises for an open border policy, not least of which, unconstantly, uh, unconstitutionally ending the Trump era Remain in Mexico agreement with Mexico regarding the amnesty conun- conundrum, which is mostly a planned process for the appearance of a more legal entry of our southern border. And whereas the Biden Harris administration has offered a pain lip service as to their resolute response to the ravages of COVID while alternately resettling one point eight million illegal migrants across our southern border, while refusing to manage the massive COVID infection rate of illegal migrants in excess of twenty percent as they transport those migrants here illegally into our unsuspecting heartland. And whereas an estimated two point four million of known illegal migrants are projected to violate our su- southern border, uh, creating a projected estimate of four point eight illegal migrants, including the getaways mostly into the core of our heartland, where this product of the Biden Harris resettlement plan to enact the grounding of America is the manifestation of the democratic socialist fervent affront to our democracy by the. by the planned abrupt demographic shift to vote illegal migrants as soon as is possible. And whereas the southern border spanning the borders of four states have been accurately described as our nation's largest crime scene, where the illegals, the coercive, coercive force of the Biden-Harris resettlement plan are aided in this multi-layered endeavor by the narcotics and human trafficking cartels of Mexico, while in the service of the Biden-Harris administration, now richer and more powerful to commit the evil acts to distribute massive unprecedented quantities of the narcotic fentanyl human slaves and even terrorists into our United States of America. And whereas border states such as Texas have intensely been affected by the full frontal assault by the Biden-Harris resettlement plan and that reactive Texas government that has now called upon the National Guard, their National Guard, to enforce state and federal border laws to stem this planned invasion and in the complete absence of any real consistent federal enforcement, which is now their state and federal constitutional and sovereign right to do so. And whereas le- illegal immigration is a mammoth long-term cost to local governments, both state and county governments, who are forced to pay the bulk for the necessity, excuse me, the necessary infrastructure to accommodate the caring for these illegal migrants resettled in states such as North Carolina. Therefore, let it be resolved that it is incumbent, is, is an incumbent necess- necessity for local governments to be aware of the severe consequences of the Biden-Harris resettlement plan to enact the Browning of America, to know that they may seek constitutional remedy to defend our sovereign southern border, thereby reversing Biden-Harris, the Biden-Harris plan to purposefully and forever change or destroy our constitutional republic. And I ask for your vote as a motion.
And I asked in there a second. I seconded and I add to this, we, we're gonna have about five million new people in the United States this year because of what Stan is talking about. This is a really big deal.
Yeah, I would like to also add that we, we send this to our constituent, uh, our congressional delegation and, uh, also, uh, delegations of the four border states as well.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of Commissioner Deppard's motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? No action.
I make the motion. He want all, he want all white folk here. That's what I want. He ain't got nothing to ask me. He said Browning of America?
I, I really don't think this is a, a race thing. This is a, this is a real thing.
Why did you say Browning of America?
Those are the words used by the Democratic Socialist Party. And they're, they use these words. This is the words they use. This is their plan.
And then you think I'm gonna vote for it? You want to get rid of me now?
Well, well, hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. This is a race thing by your party.
Well, it might be and I'm not gonna be a part of it.
And you're like, actually you are a part of it. I'm not making it a race thing right now.
All right, we, this, this is, this is a deity in Rome. We ain't gonna, we, this deity in Rome. Any other commissioners? Can we have a, the commissioner comment section? I won't deny. Hearing none, is there a motion? Will you, I hope you don't bring that same thing back up again. Now, you, 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 you've done it.
Well, I'll say this. This is an important issue. Y'all make light of it. But I've been right from, from, uh, years and years ago bringing these, these issues up and now it's happening. And, and this is gonna be a massive issue. None of you three do not feel that it is. But it, it is going, no, of course you don't. You don't do math. I do math. And math is very important. And when the taxpayers cannot afford their taxes, I will remind them that you thought this was a race thing.
Oh, yes, I did. I'm not gonna deny.
Motion, motion. entertain a motion to adjourn.
Race all time.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.